Here. But why I the. The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. This is the November uh meeting, our regular meeting of the central county uh planning commission. All right, we have everybody, oh, everybody's technical, okay. But we have an almost full house. All right, our first order of business, let's take a look at the meeting, the minutes from October ninth. And as I said, well, that was more of a few minutes, so like somebody who was here to make the.
Motion we set the nuts.
Thank you. All right, motion by David Struck second inviting Damian Renee. Page seven. All in favor?
All right.
All right, so Julia, let's go through our sagas here. So three point garden major subdivision. They seem to have asked it to be table eight.
Uh, at the last meeting, uh, it was actually tabled for two months. So we technically don't even have to discuss it today, but I figured for the sake of the continuum, I would have that motion on again through this month.
Oh, so in October they asked for a two month?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Like a motion we table this to the December meeting.
All right, yeah, motion by Struck, who sent it. Goodbye Chris. All favor? Okay. Um, is that the same thing for the Verizon Wireless?
Yeah, uh Attorney Williams told me that he would contact me when he was ready to move forward, but I've not heard from him.
All right, but his deadline is January.
Correct, we plan to.
All right, so uh, I was making a motion and then we continue to table Matthew Culver in this one to the uh January, let's put, let's just think of the January here. If he, you want it that way, and then if you wish to be honored, everybody tell us.
Tax me off yet.
Okay, so that, that, look to it that way. Uh, my motion that we committed is to the January twenty twenty six meeting, second, second invite ever.
You said January twenty six.
January of twenty twenty six, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right. So I see that a new business. We have with that center updates amendment, I guess there were some changes or some comments that came in afterwards during earlier.
To summarize what's going, what happened, um, after the township had the data center ordinance advertised, we received the Monroe County Planning Commission letter. Um, we do not have any opportunity to make changes to the data ordinance from their suggestions, because then we would have readvertise it. And they understood that it was important for me to get these regulations first.
That's true.
Um, as of last meeting, I promised the board that you would see an amendment uh to discuss not only the changes that you wished for um regarding additional research for a hundred thousand dollar, or excuse me, one hundred thousand gallons per day uh based on the basin and uh which one other item that Alex will talk about. Um, after the meeting and after you discussed the changes that you wanted, I confirmed with John Tessler, the uh Leonard County Planning Commission pieces that were really important that we looked at. Um, as such, what is in your binder now is suggestions and pieces of items that we need to talk about it, uh, and I'll let Alex take it from there.
That's the existing full document, correct? All right, now.
Thanks Scott, so basically I figure the easiest way to do this with you all is to just kind of start at comment number two and just kind of work down.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll see that the county asked the township solicitor should discuss the uh, what they claim to be ambiguity on the aesthetics criteria in ordinance. So I mean the research I did was for the seizure region specifically Chestnut Hill Township and they have like one sentence that addresses aesthetics, and so yours is like a page.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I guess I'm a little, I'm a little confused as to what they're all, you know. If, if other municipalities have one sentence and you have thirty sentences. Is, is this specific, is this specific enough? I mean, Ron, I mean, when you, when you look at these aesthetic criteria, do you have any concerns over vagueness or ambiguity?
They really are, they, you know, they're, I think they're specific with respect to uh what it is saying. Tell me what, what they're looking for. A way of, again, material, pattern, texture, color, and other things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and I also always question myself, and I can't say I have done the research perhaps or the chair had. Oh, I'd like to, I'm heard about whether we can even regulate a sex with respect to, you know, this type of order, you know, as opposed to uh some other type of order, so.
But I think that's okay.
I'm sorry, Ron, I'll differentiate this type of words from another type of word.
Well, I would say that this, this is an ordinance and where you're creating data centers and then you're saying, well, this is how we want to see them designed, this is how we want to see them look. I, I guess it's, it's okay to do that, I just always have my stomach full a little bit, I could just be me. But I, but I think it's, you know, again, I don't think there's anything vague about it.
Not only is it anything vague, no.
I thought they were pretty good guidelines, I think if you try to get too specific, then you end up having like a fifth page, you know, book of details.
I, 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 I just believe it is ours. I, I don't see any reason to change it. You mean.
Let's just tell us we should specify what type of big building deter, what type of pattern, actually, or type of color, I don't know what else.
Yeah. Is it last year, it was for uh attenuation downfall for it? Not really. So I just said. It comes as all good.
You, you. Well, then you bet, Doc, that's, you know, I, I think, I think they're okay.
Ron, I took a look at some other ordinances throughout the county, some don't mention aesthetics at all, others like Chestnut Hill has a single sentence. So yours are potentially one of the most detailed in the whole county. So I, I don't know.
And there was thought put into this.
Yeah, this is all based on the ordinances from Virginia.
Yep.
So obviously it's a different state. Different great, you know, different neighboring legislation and so on, but I mean wasn't just, we didn't synthesize the Sierra Smithfield passion, much of this was from other ordinances in existence. So, so, okay, also want to rely on the term on that, yeah, this is the, this is the landscape buffer, so this one's a little, this one's a little bit more, um this one's probably a bit more extensive, so I, again, I looked at the West End Townships, because they seem to be um pretty, well, ahead of all this, there's already at least two or three that have adopted ordinances and they're in the county regional planning over there, so they've embedded, they're already on the books. They have a hundred foot landscaping buffer, what I'm confused about with regards to their comment is that they they, they, they're wondering if the township should discuss the appropriateness of the width of this additional required landscape buffer, but it's the same exact width as those in the West End, so the only thing I can think of that makes this a little bit more strict than the West End ones is the two hundred foot setback. So your current ordinance uh basically requires a two hundred foot setback residential districts, and within that two hundred feet, there has to be a hundred foot landscaping. So, I mean, I don't know if they want us to just get rid of the two hundred foot setback and say a hundred foot setback, and in that setback has to be a hundred foot landscape buffer, or you just want to get rid of the setback completely, just keep the hundred foot buffer, but considering that other townships already have a hundred foot wide area, I, I don't know that, that I agree that, that that this is inappropriate, it, it's already been sort of approved and vetted in other municipalities, unless you guys think it's excessive. I mean, that's up to you all, the two hundred, just, just for the record, the two hundred foot came actually from the all ordinance which stated that um basically the um, basically it says here that any backup generators or power systems shall be either fully enclosed or located no closer than two hundred feet from the nearest residential property or district, so that's where that came from. Then what we did is we took that and said, okay, well, we're just gonna include that for all uses and then in that, that a hundred foot uh landscape, so maybe this group thinks that a hundred foot landscaping bumper is sufficient, you don't need to set it back to order, that, that's your call. If you think it's exclusionary, if you think it's gonna potentially lead to issues where developers are gonna say two hundred foot is too much, look, look, seizure is only a hundred foot wide, there's two hundred feet. I just figured I put up for discussion, maybe a little background of where the two hundred foot came from.
Alex, what section is that in the township code?
That was from the old one. I think, yeah.
Basically. I forgot my.
So, yeah, anyway, that's, I mean, if you read their comment I think it's it almost reads like they're saying either or, you want to pick the two hundred foot setback or the hundred foot landscape buffer, because they did know both things in there. And when I spoke to Eric in the county planning commission today, he said, well, I mean, you could, you could get rid of the two hundred foot setback. And he sort of conceded that, yeah, I see the seizure, read the ordinance is now a hundred foot bumper.
Dude, we lead it way. But Mike, that will be mine.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be, that'll be my thing. Leave it, right? Yeah, and that seems to be the, actually, that is, you have this consensus, is that we would recommend leaving, leaving as is.
It's not knowing that indoor storage areas require a two hundred foot setback as well. Case you're wondering just anything else from your current ordinance that requires two hundred feet, there is one other use indoor storage areas. So.
Well, if it's storing my search history, that's fine, yes. Yeah, so we have other spots where there's a two hundred foot, right? Uh, yeah, that seems to be the consensus, Alex.
That says something about that which is being stored.
The next one's gonna be on page four of seven, if you flip, flip a couple of pages to comment number five, oh wait, minimum lot size, top number four and five, so the top of page four.
Oh, there we are.
And so it looks like every municipality set it to either five or ten currently, I don't believe their ordinance sets it at anything, so it's probably good to set some lot size, it's also worth noting that there aren't a whole lot of lots in your municipality that can, you know, utilize this use, you might want to consider going for five, just so that you can prevent any exclusionary challenges. That's, that's, that's your call, it looks like Chestnut Hill Township might be the only one that's setting it at ten, a lot of others are going to five. That's what I was told today.
Well, we're, we're saying what, five, ten?
Yeah, either or, it seems to be pretty standard practice, uh, but I'm, I'm just saying, if you, if you remember that map with all the parcels that you could have it. I mean, I don't know, I, it's up to you guys, do you think it'll really do you any harm if you set it at five acres, it just makes the whole part for someone to say you're being exclusionary. And again, that's the call that your solicitor can maybe, oh, oh.
Were you saying it would be an exclusionary? There's no lots out there that are ten acres that, in the, in the M one, that they can do this?
Well, there's plenty of lots that are over ten acres, but, you know, it might add a few more if you set it lower, that way it makes it a little harder, again, I, I'm not a lawyer, maybe that's something Ron can comment on, whether it matters. Right now, it's, there's no minimum lot size, so that's even better that, you know, from that standpoint, so if you increase the restrictiveness of it by saying a lot size, my feeling is.
Why would we want it to be five acres, ten acres, twenty acres, thirty acres, what, what, what's the criteria that we're trying to?
Well, if you read the county comment, they, that's, they kind of bring that up. It says the township should consider establishing a minimum lottery for the use because minimum lottery is not proposed. And such development would be regulated by the existing district all permits, which would be under one acre. The one acre, either the M one or E district.
If you're gonna have a two hundred foot setback, you're forced into a five acre lot greater.
Is that, is that what it is? Yeah, okay, I was gonna think that was gonna happen, okay.
So you want to just insert it five acres into there, is that minimum lot size to satisfy that concern, do you even need to, I don't think you need to with your setback. I mean, okay.
Oh, okay.
It, it's in essence taking care of in the other the other part of. Yeah, very nice. He was gonna ask you.
About one acre is two hundred by two hundred.
Yeah.
Four hundred, I mean, four hundred by four hundred, you have one all the way around with just a pinpoint.
Yeah. You had forty-four thousand square feet, Robert.
Forty-three, five, six.
What are you saying, number? Four hundred. That's an eight.
Four.
Yeah, you're not gonna have that.
Five, forty-three, five, sixty.
So you're gonna be at least a quarter.
You got three point, if you just touch this bottle here, two hundred feet all the way around.
Yeah.
You'd be three point six, seven acres. So.
So no matter what.
So no matter, you know.
This for a setback, it takes care of it.
Right, you put a decent sized data center there, you're gonna be in the seven, eight acres minimum, if not ten.
No matter what.
Yep.
Okay, with the two hundred. Yes.
The two hundred.
Right, okay, next, next one. This is an interesting one, definitely gonna look for your guidance on this one, they're suggesting well, you can see the, basically, it's recommended that the township consider applying a maximum percentage of woodlands that can, that may be removed for data centers prohibiting excess woodland removal will better preserve the natural environment and mitigates through mortuary limited impacts, and then the only thing I could find in your ordinance that, that is related to this is in your solar criteria. And it basically says that solar array shall not be located, wood, wooded areas primarily devoted to mature trees in excess of two acres that would require removal of greater than twenty percent of mature trees unless the board supervisors at Salo Group will determine more would create less impacts to the overall projects. And then it says for the purposes, laws, brushes, and shrubs are not considered trees, so.
The reason that the Monroe County Planning Commission discussed this is to prevent what happened at Fort Worth Township where a developer came and he clear cut the entire parcel.
Instead of a percent, could you put have it limited to the actual building site? Including parking, because what if somebody buys, you know, we don't have a thousand acre lot, but if they bought a thousand acres. And the percentage would be twenty-five percent of that would be two hundred and fifty acres, I mean, they might only need ten acres for the building, just seems like it might, I don't know, I just feel like they're all good, maybe somehow what they're actually doing.
That's a, that's a reasonable suggestion, there's also this concept of limit of disturbance which is sometimes like where they need to move the equipment in and also like safety for the workers, so it's like it's like the footprint of the building plus certain, John, maybe speak to that, this is more your you know, so I that's the only thing I can think of is you might want to have it a little bit bigger than the building.
Right.
But it, you know, certainly doesn't need to be the whole lot.
Right.
Well. The most developers that I've seen on this side of the table or the other side, they don't clear any more than what's necessary to support their project. I mean, if we had a thousand acre lot that was all wooded and they were gonna put up something parking lot with a data center that needed fifty acres, they're not gonna they're not gonna cut it, I think if you're gonna limit it the only way to limit it that makes sense is with a percentage. Whether, whether that number's twenty percent or whatever you think is appropriate, I think that's the the only logical way to really remember that.
What do you mean, like proposed structure plus twenty percent?
No, I can't, you can't we're limiting twenty percent of the tree zone a lot, I mean, I think that's what they the other ordinance says, correct?
Yeah, I just wonder if that's if that, you know, I just.
I tell you, it could be. We, we don't, we don't have that criteria in any other zoning, do we?
Yeah, and the solar, the solar, yeah.
Yeah, I think it could be. Well, but I'm not a attorney, but I think it could be based on what it's. Ron, I guess I got not crazy about that, that putting a percentage for woodlands there. Just so uh again, I don't think a developer is going to spend money to clear cut property that they're not gonna need to have clear cut. Unless they're just, you know, flush with money or flush with cash. I think as John said, if there's gonna be a building in these twenty acres for whatever, parking lot, building, et cetera, that's what they're gonna clear, they're not gonna be cleared for, I don't think, but again, these are all policy calls, they're really not legal calls, whatever the agent gets.
Some of these data centers are quite huge. Uh, how many acres do they occupy? Twenty acres sounds about right. Uh, for some of these things, they're, they're huge, right?
They are. Now, again, it's all of those too, but generally they're, they're large, they're tall. Upper Mount Buffalo, uh uh, when they were having their data center woes, if you will, hundred feet tall. You know, uh, eight hundred, nine hundred million square feet. So now, Amazon went away because Upper Mount Buffalo wanted money to
Right.
have them do that, so they said no, see you later.
So John, what's, what's?
They're big, they can, they can be big.
How many acres are millions square feet? Forty. The footprint. Forty acres.
Give or take.
Give or take.
One said, uh, within a video that Dave sent us for fifty acres. Want to be used by Meta in Georgia.
Yeah.
So Louisiana, fifty acres is pretty, probably about the right size so far. Until, until the system gets smaller.
Uh-huh, right.
Million is twenty-three acres.
Right.
Okay, how many lots does Smithfield have that could accommodate something that long? Oh, you've got and what was the question about the millions per feet, that was the data center itself.
Right.
Then you need to add two hundred feet to that all the way around, that's gonna start to that's gonna be geometrically.
Thirty or forty-eight, yeah. That's gonna be big. With the lot space.
Julia, what, is there, was there a backstory to the company to clear cut? Um, I have not heard any information that was confirmed, it was my understanding of them often. That's, that's what I was wondering, if somebody had cleared, had something for longer.
I'll tell you, I mean, it feels, I'm the engineer there too, mo- most of that timber, they've been even
Not useful?
They have used it for pulp.
Yeah.
Well, that.
But it wasn't good timber. It was like second or third growth of wild under. But they they did clear cut.
Yeah.
The mountain.
That carried others who were traded because now there's nothing, so they had to do, did you get involved in that too?
Oh, absolutely. For, I mean, we just had a, an incident from the last rain week ago. One of their basins blew out. And the hope shoots. It's, well, it's been constant.
So just that kind of go against the statement that, oh, nobody's, you don't think anybody's gonna do that? I mean, we have an instance where they did do that.
Oh, yeah, they did do that, and then Ocono did take steps to protect themselves from it happening again.
Okay, so shouldn't we be doing that now?
If you're concerned about it.
Yeah, to prevent it happening the first.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
John, do you know offhand what steps the township took if they established a percentage?
They, I don't know that they restricted removal, but they really tightened up, that, they had, they had a problem, so we're just gonna deal with some other things that happened, they had no regulations controlling where the solar field could go, so somebody brought it in. And that's where it went. So that's all been tightened up in their zoning ordinance. Not so much on how many trees you can remove, but just where you can have it.
If the, if the developer wants to expand of a given piece of property, like they're, they propose a a certain size data center, and then they build, they buy a larger lot. And then subsequently, they put another building out there, how, are we protecting that regard?
You're not, if it means all the zoning requirements. You know, it's.
They, but they buy and they develop, and then they subsequently have a bigger lot than they, than they're using, can they add another building?
Yes. If it means the zoning requirement, that meets the setback in the area.
Yeah.
And impervious surface and all that, yes, they may.
All right.
I can maybe ruminate on that a little bit, the next section is number seven, which basically addresses the commissioning, now, I remember this group watching your video wanted some specific language on decommissioning, so we went ahead and inserted some of that, if you turn to page five, you can see a couple of sentences have been added in bold and underlined.
I think it's good way to, I'm betting.
I like it. Yes.
In what respect, yeah. In what respect, David, are you talking about?
This.
Oh, that one? Sorry.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a valid one. The decommission.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That was, that was always a concern of mine when you're doing these things, isn't it? Even the solar stuff, whatever it is, they're gonna
Yeah.
When they you know, when you're written, projects develop or, you know, bankrupt or whatever else, you know, it's no longer feasible when you got these things sitting there.
Okay.
Your value.
And the next comment, if you're okay, moving on, Scott.
Yeah.
Parking requirements, so your current ordinance is quite flexible in regards to park parking. It simply requires a uh it has demand based parking for data centers. So if you, basically, your current ordinance that you recently adopted, says that um instead of those listed in schedule two, a parking demand study can be prepared, the study, you know, gives some criteria and then based on that study submitted to township, that's how many parking spots.
Yeah, so you're not wasting
Yes.
space, just making parking spots that'll never really be impervious, necessary.
And then the, the county came back and said, um, while this is reasonable, the township should ensure that parking not be reduced past recommended number of spaces as prescribed in various county resources, specifically one space per eight thousand square feet of area to be accessed by employees or one space per employee.
Yeah, yeah, they should have stopped there where the, the first dependent clause that were said reasonable, period, that's good. That's what they should have stopped.
That's your call, if you, if you.
That'd be my call, but I only want to, I remember we got.
Why do we care if it's eight thousand, with, that, that is no longer based on what they need, right?
Yeah, what is that, it's arbitrary.
Yeah. They keep it the way it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it gives more flexibility, you know, there.
Yeah.
Not just count spaces for the.
They could have a million square feet, only have five employees.
They have five employees, they don't need the five hundred year parking event.
Right.
Yeah, that's why.
That's what it is, I, you know, got all this stuff, it's, you know.
The full stop after the word required.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I would suggest.
Well, when, when, most employees for uh, by the times are about four thousand for construction, and then after they've done, there's probably a couple of hundred.
Well, it's based on megawatt production, though. They're estimating.
All right. Okay, well, the last couple of comments here are on the bottom of page five, basically you guys wanted us to do some research on the hundred thousand GPD requirement and also their request for the loop system, so the, the hundred thousand's pretty complex, it's based on the Delaware Basin Water Code from what they call the compact. Uh, there's reference to it in section two point five zero point two.
The compact, you're talking about the Delaware Basin Commission, the three state, the three state compact?
Yeah, so in the code itself, there's reference to it for metering, where basically exceed, anything that exceeds a thousand, ten, a hundred thousand a day for any thirty day period, you'll require a meter. And then in the manual rules of practice and procedure, that's where it seems to be. And then in the manual rules of practice and procedure, that's where it seems to be, um, regulated. Um. Four oh one dot three five, classification of projects. Classification of projects for review due under section three point eight of the compact, and then it basically goes into detail. Um. It says, except as the commission may specifically direct by notice to the project owner or sponsor of project and any other common classifications will be. Will be deemed not to have a substantial effect, no water resources and it's not required. If it's, um, if it does not exceed a hundred thousand gallons, so basically. The legal question here, and this is really for, for Ron, is does DRBC jurisdiction operate as concurrent authority alongside township zoning? Or does DRBC jurisdiction act as exclusive authority that preempts local regulations?
My experience has been there is a preempt.
Preemption, sorry, Ron.
There is, there, the, the. The Delaware Authority preempts ours, yeah, what you're saying, yes.
Yeah, that, that's been my experience.
In all three states.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah.
States.
Share it.
Here.
That's up to the township, you want to test that? Or do you wanna just leave it as is?
Well, that is the Act two twenty, state water plant, water resource and planning division should come into play.
What was that, Jerry?
Well, because when, when I did some, I did research on the water usage. Uh, this, this fell under the, uh, as the data department of environmental protection. Act two twenty. Uh, state water plant. So. They're using, according, according to the, this act, uh. State water use is regulated under this act. Two twenty. And that includes, that includes commercial institution and industrial, and industrial water use. And conservation.
It's a fair question, right, it sounds like one, one way to interpret what you just asked is what role does DEP have to play in this? And John, maybe you can help me out here, but my understanding is they regulate public water supply withdrawals. I don't know that they.
Well, if, if you're going to. Pull water out of. The region here, through, through a well, you've got. At least two masters, if not three, one being DEP, and the other being the Delaware River Basin Commission. Now, they both see pretty much pie to eye, uh, they recognize. And, and the DEP. Will refer you to the Delaware River Basin Commission with anything that you propose. The DEP is more focused on. How you're drilling your well, protecting the groundwater with the way you drill your well. Uh. And if, depending on what you're using it for, how you're treating it, et cetera. The PRBC is focused primarily on the amount of water that you're pulling out. But tho- those are other things, when I said a third master, if there's any local ordinances that. Have specific criteria that you also have to adhere to.
Where are these units, where are these systems gonna get their water, John?
I don't know, because I, I'm not that familiar with them, but normally, I'm understanding they drill a well.
Yeah.
Now, I understand the newer technology is using different sources of cool.
Mm-hmm.
So they probably don't need as much water as the very early data centers did.
Is that what they mean by loop system?
Yeah. Well, a loop system would. I think you could have a loop system with the water, but you've got, you've got to put it back into the ground, they wanna, they wanna. They don't want it shipped off site through a sewer system, they, they want it put back into the ground, and then ERBC. That's what they want to tip, I mean, again, referring to Okinawa Township. We have trouble pulling. Providing central sewer up on top of the mountain. Because they don't like the water being, um. Pulled out of the ground up there, then put into the sewer system, and. Yes, so.
The water move.
They want the water, you're pulling water up out of the mountain.
Yeah.
They want it to go onsite back into the ground if there.
And that's a loop system.
Yeah.
I would recommend that we leave it the way, the way it is. If nothing else, there will be Delaware Basin Commission. Preemption, but frankly, the, that's why the, uh, DEP preempts local ordinance as well, so. It's, it's, it's more than one layer, I think, we're the, we're the small limit in this. So I would say, I would recommend.
Just defer to the.
Should there, should there be a reference that should be in accordance with both DEP and?
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, they win. If there was ever a dispute between the township and DEP, township, the DEP will win. The dispute between the township and the basin commission and the DEP, they both win.
And we don't need to put in our ordinance that they have to comply with DEP, because DEP is gonna make sure that.
Because they're, because they're already there.
Their own thing.
That is correct.
But they're concerned that our water table, they're never.
I thought, they're always, they're always lacking, so. Data center has been drilled well, they're gonna suck up, no one would have been. Then whether it had to, had to well, a well already dug.
Well, that's one thing that the DEP, I'm not sure whether DRBC gets involved enough enough, but I know the DEP definitely does. They're not gonna be able to drill well without doing a water impact analysis, like things are gonna have to monitor. Neighbor's wells within so many feet, you draw down tests, and if those wells are affected. We're gonna have to come up with a plan to not affect those wells. Uh, so that, that is regulated already pretty heavily.
All right.
All I got for you. So, uh, any further discussion on that, or no good?
Anybody? There's anything?
Yeah, I, I have a question. It's sort of.
Dove.
Elephant in the room. Does anyone really think we're gonna have these things around here? I mean, seriously, I don't know what you think.
Not the maple ones, no. Eventually we'll have them, but the smaller version.
Smaller versions, yeah. And what about the power plant, the supply of power, because?
They're gonna need power.
They're gonna need it onsite power, is, is anybody?
Most likely, they're gonna need onsite power, because. If they, if they tap into the, uh, electrical grid.
Yeah.
Our, our. Our electrical, uh, bill, they're gonna.
There you go.
Are gonna go way up and.
I don't even think they've been up, they're not out of infrastructure currently, they just.
Well, there was just a headline today where Gina Ferrero got us out of. Whatever we were in.
Yes, uh.
And it's for this very reason, I mean.
Yeah.
The governor wants data center, I mean, or he wants two things, he wants data center, but he also wants to sell. Pennsylvania fuel. From an economic standpoint.
Yeah.
And, and.
Natural gas.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Can I call your attention to page eleven in this before we shut the book on it, which are about? Sound levels and sound.
Mr. Chairman, uh, hopefully you have, uh, you'll have to go back into last, last month, last month's. Or news. I'll print that one, John, sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, bud.
Okay, guys. Yeah. Whereas.
I, I didn't bring this up with the supervisors, only because I wanted time to think it through, but. Uh, we've all spent the time on our sound ordinance, our noise and nuisance ordinance.
Yeah.
And I think we did something that was quite good as far as, uh, an ordinance that worked. I'm. I'm more, uh, concerned about this. First of all, it says that, um, the sound should be measured, measured at the perimeter property boundaries or receiving. Land uses, well, it's like, which is it? What we did in our ordinance was say, it was if the receiving land, so at least we knew where the boundary is. This is saying it's, it's this or it's that. Which is it, all right, then it calls for a study by sound engineers. Um. As part of the conditional use hearing, well, the question then becomes, well, this is all theoretical. Um, since this isn't built yet, and since we don't know. What the reverberations are in the land area that it is, we don't know what the wind will be and so forth. It's very hard to determine what the sound level actually is, it can be estimated, but there's nothing that can be done that. It's, it's not like a traffic study where you just put a meter on and you say, okay, there's, uh, five hundred and fifty cars per day. We're, it's, it's, uh, subject to questions and analysis. Uh, and then it calls for a, um, a study conducted six months after. The certificate of occupancy is issued, well, that's a practical measure. And what it calls for in this table, uh, is something that, uh, is very complex. It probably can only be done by a sound engineer, uh, of which there are not many. And these are people that, um, either design huge industrial spaces or concert halls, things like that. How do we get one of these at the point where we have a CFO and we have to find out what the real sound is in the neighborhood? Is difficult, and also then question becomes, what if there are complaints after that? Who measures it and how? And what I'm suggesting is that what we already have in our noise and nuisance ordinance. And where we have a table of, uh, decibel measurements. That are both day and night and for, um, continuing sounds and impulse sounds, and we have. Uh, two tables to measure that, either a C weighted table or an A weighted table, and we went over this very carefully. I think it's really adequate, and we don't need all of this, because I think it just confuses the issue. And I think it's impractical, um, to actually carry out. So I would say, um, or maybe, uh, we should. Just refer to the noise and nuisances ordinance here and saying those rules apply. And, um, this table looks very nice, but to me, it's the kind of thing where somebody at some township. Read it, about it in a book, put it in, and it's been copied ever since, but nobody knows what it's really about. Uh, so that's my suggestion, and I didn't bring this up to the super managers, because I really wanted to look through. But when you talk about octave bands, and then you talk about different BV levels at different octave bands. It really, um, is an impractical way of doing exactly what we're doing practically in the ordinance, which is saying. It's C weighted or it's A weighted, and those are measurements that either take in more frequencies or a fewer frequencies. I would go with that, so that's my suggestion.
Well, cause that's what you, you were just saying is that that's really the problem we're trying to avoid.
It's what?
Really, it's the problem we're trying to avoid, we're trying to avoid is the, is the nuisance noise. From, from one of these massive things.
Right.
That's really the problem.
OSHA, I believe, John, from, I don't know, OSHA's, uh, it was like A, A band, A scale. I, I wouldn't know without looking up.
So piggyback off of what he said, the township.
Hey, hang on. We're not in public comment yet, hang on.
Okay, well, it's, it's relevant.
We're, we're still, just, just hold on a second, are you, are you done, Robert?
I'm finished.
Okay. Before we get to you, I won't, I won't turn it down.
I understand.
Do we have to do anything? Else, do we have to do anything else with that?
It looks like you.
Would, well, would that, would that, would that trigger a, an additional problem for what we're doing here tonight?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to delete that octave band table, um, that would be part of the ordinance amendment. Um, because you already recommended one change on more detail for the, um, decommissioning. Now, it's worth noting that octave band table was. From your existing ordinance before you updated it, so that table literally was there since, I don't know, whenever the previous.
From the noise ordinance?
No, from the date, so this, the, the noise that Robert threw, that section of.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I get it.
So that table there that details octave bands, that was already in your zoning ordinance for data centers. Prior to your recent update, it was carried over to the new one, and then there was some additional criteria, I don't have it in front of me. But from my memory, there was some additional criteria added to make it even more robust than it was previously. And so if you were to delete that table, which is certainly a policy call on the township, that would be included in this amendment. Um, but you'd have to revisit that whole noise section. Um. And, and rewrite it basically, and, and, you know.
Does it agree with our noise ordinance? I mean, is there, do they, do they overlay?
It cites it, basically, if I recall, I mean, we can pull it up, I don't, I don't have it turning, so I'm not.
That's all right.
Speak to it, but if I recall correctly, it says whichever one's more strict shall prevail, or something like, along those lines.
Okay.
Does somebody read that section and clarify that, as I said, I, I had a copy, but I no longer have.
Well, I agree with what Robert's saying, I don't like the double specified, you know, criteria.
The redundancy.
Yeah, really, because if you change one, then the other one conflicts, so I, I would say just. Stay with the noise ordinance as the criteria for data centers.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's, that is what we're working on.
Yeah.
Now, hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think.
And you are, sir?
I'm Zach Klotowski, one and nine clubhouse court, East Rutherford, yeah. Um, so with that, uh, obviously, there's a reason that it's different. Um, it seems probably, I will agree with Robert on this, that we should use the more strict one. Uh, and having two allows the data center. More or less, it's gonna allow more of what they need to operate, because. It's based off of something that was reasonably placed before to allow them to operate. So with the, the noise ordinance that we have in place now, anything over sixty-five decibels would be deemed illegal at the property line. So. Me having a conversation, this conversation right now, five feet away, is probably somewhere around seventy decibels. So technically, if I were to have a conversation on the property line, it could be deemed illegal. So this noise ordinance is, is a good one to use, because it makes pretty much everything illegal, so it's gonna really keep out of data center.
Yeah.
So, and also with that being said, uh, Robert also admitted that. The township doesn't have a way to enforce any of this. They don't have the personnel, they don't have the equipment, they don't have the training. Robert, with the NIO Sound App on his phone, doesn't, you know, doesn't count as, uh. Training and his bullshit Hollywood stuff doesn't count as training. So for him to, to admit that this doesn't, you know, the township doesn't have it. But to say that the back nine has been fined, fined for four, three or four noise violations. Is a little crazy, so I mean, thanks for admitting that on the record that township doesn't have any of this stuff. So, so, so yeah, use that noise ordinance, and just so anyone who's trying to build a data center or do anything loud in this town. You can pretty much do it, because it's kind of unenforceable, because no matter what the ordinance is. You don't have someone to enforce it, the ordinance is kind of useless, so just remember that.
The township uses Reed Professional Sound Beaters that are calibrated before every time they're used. Uh, this is what professional sound recorders use.
And professional sound reporters, not Robert with a cell phone like a big guy.
Just so you'll know, I have a graduate degree in this.
Oh, great, all right, wonderful, on degrees, that's right.
Yeah, I missed the point. All right, two, one second, are we set now? Alex, we can move on?
I mean, uh, my only comment on this subject is, I happened to attend a hearing last night at another township. Where Penn Future, one of their attorneys commented, said the noise for data centers is far more complex than it might seem. So my recommendations, have somebody T and M, a noise engineer, take a look at the criteria in your current ordinance and, and see. And, and, and get, get us a professional opinion, because this is, I'm not a physicist, but apparently this is.
You can model sound, you can, but you can mathematically model the sound.
Why, why do they get the special, the special? Why why do they get the special, a special privilege for the sound ordinance though? It it seems like it's a special privilege versus everyone else in the township, it's a special privilege directly directly at data center. And then they get the special privilege of getting to test it instead of being deemed a nuisance before being proved a nuisance. They're getting to prove that they're not a nuisance. So it seems like a spe- a special, a special thing for a data center.
But it's just 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 anyway, that's I I mean, I don't know how to piggyback on that, I'll I'll just make a standalone comment, say that that's maybe just to. Confirm what I said, I I would recommend T and M take a close look at this for somebody, maybe that. I don't know if that's someone that the township wants to do or not, I'm, you know.
Well, that's up, that look, that's that's up to the uh.
I don't I don't know that.
Supervisors to approve that kind of a project, but I understand.
I I think this is more complicated than just decibels because you have vibrations and humming and all sorts of different and 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 that's. If even though it doesn't have as much sound pressure, it can still harm quality of life and you want to protect that from like the generators and the electronic equipment, so you. So before you start slicing and dicing your ordinance, I would try to get a professional opinion on it.
Agreed.
Second by recommendation.
Alright, public comment. Give them the veterans.
Thank you.
Don't worry.
Good to see you all again.
What what brings you out tonight?
I'll just well, just to really do a uh update, if you would. Uh on the center, but project, but also a data center. Um first of all, uh you know, we're real happy to get the Wawa open. Um we have limited right now ability to develop because out of our hundred and twenty acres. That we own, we we can only develop about twenty of them. Now, Wawa and St. Luke's, of course, are in there, um we are getting ready to bring in. Uh two best casual restaurants behind the Wawa. Um we have a uh Hilton operator, very exciting, uh to uh. Uh we'll be bringing in relatively soon uh about the location where the Dunkin is currently. And we hope finally, after over a year of negotiations, to relocate the existing Dunkin. Um but we are headed up because of uh Pendot, frankly, Route two oh nine. Um we think we've identified, thank the Senator Brown, uh the money to finish two oh nine. And we met with Pendot and based upon the Lang and Traffic Study update. That we should be able to proceed to develop most of the remainder of the development. We have been busy, however, working on a data center a little bit over a year ago, I didn't even know what that was. Uh but I do now, um and at first we hired, we actually went under contract with a couple developers that. Turned out to be uh really phony baloney, they didn't know what they were doing. Um we went to one of our larger investors here, they introduced us to a consulting company called Greener by Design. You'll be hearing a lot from them in the future, the real experts in that business. So um we um there's a, as you probably know, there's a lot of activity in that field. I went to a uh a seminar that Senator Brown had put together in La Juana County, there were like thirty-seven. Different developments talking about data centers. But we have something that not many people do, and that is that we have a power commitment from MetNet. Okay, it took us almost a year to put together, um and that power commitment. Is between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty megawatts, and it's in writing. We also put up a very, very large deposit for what they call a load study. I had no idea what that was, I do now because it costs a lot of money to do. And what that load study does, it takes that commitment and says, okay, this is when we'll have it ready for you. And this is how much it's gonna cost, okay, um that process, we're about four to six months away. From actually having that completed, however, we really obviously need to attract an end user. And we're close enough to that now where we've actually commenced those conversations. And these are big companies, they're all different ranges, you'll hear more about that from our consultant, uh Greener by Design. But basically, these companies are being just overloaded with site applications. I mean, I, we talked to a developer the other, he he reviews ten, twelve sites a day, okay? Um and what you need is you basically have to have your opportunity packaged with a ribbon on it, okay? And that's power, that's timing, everything, what, everything that goes into it, okay? Um and uh basically, and zoning, of course, is one of those aspects. And we understand that this was a by right operation, now it's conditional zoning. And I was not surprised at that at all because this is a, this is a big subject today. And you you see signs, no data centers here, but there are, there's a lot of merit to these. Because one thing for sure is, if it if it all works, they're gonna pay a ton of real estate taxes. Because these buildings are like a thousand dollars a foot. And the other great thing about them from a township standpoint is the level of services that are needed is very minimal. Providing grammar, so we have a plan that we're going to be bringing forward into a conditional use zoning very soon. Because without it, we're not gonna tie that bow with with a user. Um and I think you're gonna like what you're seeing, you know that we're sensitive to development. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do it right, our plan is gonna show a lot of landscaping, it's gonna show major buffers. It's gonna show how we've used the topography of the ground to help shield these. These buildings from nearby residential, and we don't have a lot of residential, but we have some. And we think that what we're doing is going to uh basically really shield a large part of those buildings there. And from an elevation standpoint, what we're seeing is that these buildings really become like office buildings. Okay, and we have some ideas for design that you're gonna see that were really. Coming on two oh nine will enhance the overall development. Um early on, we had met a year ago with the supervisors and one comment that they had was. We really wanna make sure that the frontage stays commercial and that and we're committed to that. So along two oh nine, along four forty-seven, there'll be commercial there, the data center. Which, by the way, is on about fifty, you talked about side. Our concentration is about fifty acres, about five hundred thousand square feet on two buildings, okay? Um so it'll be a two level building, but the heights will be under your ordinance substantially, okay? Um so um we're anxious to get started, um I wanted to show you some of that, but. I understand it wasn't the right time and place, but it it will be soon. Um and uh I think that's just an up update on it, it is important that we uh. We do need to get this into the right line, um as probably some of you know. A lot of our infrastructure was funded with a tip, so we're in a little bit of a position where. We've got a real estate tax driven operation and we can't build any buildings. Except for our few smaller pads that we have there, so we're anxious to get this going and get get this going because. It's gonna pay a big benefit to us and a big benefit to the township, that's all I have to say, but.
Okay.
You'll see, you'll hear from us in the future, thank you very much.
You do, you know that that the ordinance was revised, what, a couple of weeks ago?
Uh supervisor.
Yes, I I've sent.
Yes. We did have a a short update meeting with the supervisors beginning of this week. Um we got some very good comments, which we've already improvised into our our plan. Um and our next step will be coming back to you guys.
Are.
Right?
Well, there's one, all these plans include beautiful pedestrian bypass.
I think we will, we we always talked about bypass in 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 our development, yes, so. We're uh, I think we stand for good development, you you'll continue to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Alright, uh Zach Loptozki, one and nine clubhouse whore. Um I've gotten up here and I've talked about this data center thing. And everyone says, well, there's never gonna be a data center here, there's never gonna be a data center here, Robert actually said it out of his mouth too. There's never gonna be a data center here. Oh wow, magically, we finished the data center ordinance and the Smithfield Gateway jumps in, they're putting the data center in. We know nothing about this data center, meanwhile, they're having meetings about it, and we know nothing about this. Where there's no, there's no talks in data center, so this guy has been planning a data center for this whole time. Magically, the data center ordinance gets finished, he shows up, Robert shows back up at work for the data center ordinance and. For this, because the data center is being planned on and obviously, Robert has his hand in this deal. Um and this is why I was saying we need to be a little more strict on all the data center stuff because we're talking about buffers and setbacks. Meanwhile, there's only twenty acres that he can build on, how big are buffers and setbacks can you have? I mean, out of a hundred and twenty acres, I also have a similar sized piece of land. Um and. I can't ride motocross on it because of the noise, the figurative noise, we don't know how loud it is. Because we don't have the right people to test it, we don't have the right equipment to test it, we don't have the proper training to test it. And all this stuff, and yet again, here we are, another another thing gets a special privilege. Because you guys want it here. If this was a motocross track and I can show the benefits, I can bring the benefits in of the people. And show what what it offers more than the data center and the four jobs that it's gonna create. The only person that's gonna help get rich is this man, and that's great for him, that's why he bought this land, and that's his right, and that's great. But I think. We should really look at it because. We've said, no, we don't know, we don't, and he just said it, well, is there ever gonna be a data center, is there ever gonna be a data center, and everyone's acting fucking dumb about it. It's a data center coming and that's why this ordinance was put in place. And that's why it's all been, and it's put in place to make it easier for the data center to operate. And everyone says, oh, God, it's more guidelines and more strict things, that's that's not the case, that's not the case, and for someone to do a sound study. Uh it's actually not that hard to find someone, uh TD, I think it was TDS Solutions, Technical Design Solutions. Uh they did a, they did our sound study here, we had a sound study done, um and you know, uh it's it's. A lot more entailed than Robert with whatever thing he says he has out there, it's not, and. There's like training and everything that needs to come up, so um. I feel like there's a lot goes on here that the public doesn't know about, uh in these meetings, I think. At supervisors' meetings, there should be more talks of what's going on. At the special supervisors' meetings that these guys get, everyone gets a special supervisors' meeting unless they're not on your side. And then they'll avoid you, so um. Just keep in mind too, they might tell you everything you wanna hear and then when you go to do it, they'll whip it out from under you and say. We didn't do that, we didn't tell you that, and they're gonna be up shit's creep without a paddle, so.
We haven't experienced that at all.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Alright, maybe, anything else? You think the motion will adjourn? Whoops, second one I did, all favor? They'll be needing to get everyone.
Yes.